Good evening. It is now 6:00 PM and I will call this December 8th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. If you please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order is approval of minutes. We have approval of November 10th, November 17th, we can't do because...
I was gonna say, there's one that you can't approve.
John wasn't there. So, November 10th, November 24th, December 1st, and December 2nd. We can't do the second.
I don't know who to talk to either.
Yeah, can't do the second.
All two?
Eleven times.
And I was out for one, so.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve November 10th, November 24th, and December 1st.
So 17 and two, we can't?
No, I was absent for the... The 17th was the... no.
John was absent for 17.
You were out the 17th and I was out the 2nd. That was just to sign the warrant writing, so... But I can't approve those.
Motion to approve.
Well, second, all in favor? So, make sure these get on the next agenda for us. Alright, so I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 12 for $377,358.87, school warrant 1027 for $84,665.57, and general warrant number 1028 for $267,590.88. Motion, I will second, so... This motion is being seconded, all in favor? Let's see, CARES Act funds?
Just older care, just two from the school. Money funds are transferred from CARES Act money, which I don't know if they can do or not, and I can get more information on that if you want before you approve it.
Yeah, no, this is food services money.
Yeah.
That was specifically requested.
Okay.
As a specific item in the CARES Act for food services.
Okay.
And it probably was just in the line item for CARES Act.
Yeah.
So it needs to be transferred into their...
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that's appropriate, yeah. So it's $37,435.75 for food services and $624.98 for speech therapy. Looks like for one student. But those are CARES Act funds, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those two transfers.
Sold.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Tara put a few things in there about upcoming elections, if you want to read it.
And tax classification is next. So, where are we at?
We're gonna do it.
We're gonna do it?
Yep. Obviously, the classification hearing is to determine if the selectmen want to have one tax rate or a split tax rate. Traditionally, we've never had a split.
Alright.
So this is the form that needs to be signed by the both of you. As you can see on the bottom, John can look at it too, the biggest percentage of our value in our town is in the residential, which is 89%. Smaller percentage for commercial and industrial, and that usually drives, if you're going to have a split tax rate. So I just need you to vote if you would.
Vote to set one single tax rate for the town?
Yes, yep.
All in motion?
So, boom.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, do we need to sign this, or...
Yes, you could sign right under the bottom where it said Board of Selectmen. Yep, that's good. And then I'll get the minutes from Ashley and we'll move on next week.
Alright. So I had a question on the tax recap stuff.
Okay, sure.
It shows that we have a projected... Projected revenues less than what we had last year.
And that is common, because you just don't know what different things. We've actually changed some of those figures since then. So Nancy and I have been going over it back and forth with the Board of Health, with the accountant, tax collector. So, the figure that you see on page three at the bottom, that 974?
On page three?
Yeah, that, right there, yep.
This is 996.
Oh, okay, that's an old one. We've got that over a million.
Oh, good.
We worked on that today. We were able to secure some funds from Jason that he was able to transfer. He had some money in curb cuts.
Okay.
And Nancy, and I talked to the Department of Revenue today, Deb Wagner, she said, "Do it." And he gave us the letter and said, "It's been sitting there for years," so he said, "Let's get it out of there." So we did.
So, do you know how much?
Total?
Yeah, what's the...
Oh my God. Actually, I've changed that figure so many times. You mean how much extra we need now?
Yeah, what do we need?
Okay, it was up to 446.
Yeah.
We got it down to 415 today.
415.
But we need to do a little bit more than 415, because you always have to have a little buffer. I can make sure that I give, you know, Thursday the exact figure to Ashley, that, you know, if anything changes between now and Thursday. I think we did everything today we could.
Okay, because the only line item that I see, and we're gonna talk to Finance Committee on Thursday night, only line item I see in the budget that we can take it out of, other than the school, which has a big nut, but...
You can take it out of more than one, though, if you want.
Yeah, but we don't have... There's nothing in here currently that we can take it out of, other than the group health insurance, which has quite a bit.
Right.
And I projected out what we've been spending.
What you've spent so far, like?
Yeah, it's like about $150,000 a month in the group health, group health insurance.
Yeah, so you're talking eight... Yeah, okay.
So, we have $1,488 in that line item through November.
Yep.
So if you project out November through July, it's just over a million. So we could, we could do the 415.
420.
420, 420.
Right off, yes.
We could do the 420.
Yeah.
And then, so I'm trying to make it a quick meeting.
Right.
We do, we do it out of group health insurance, 420, we get past this thing in May, we, if we need to adjust, we adjust.
Right, put it back in.
Put it back in, from somewhere, if we need to get it.
Yep, yep.
I just needed the number to see if it was feasible to do it that way.
Oh, I'll tell you what, you asked Ashley. It was one heck of a day we had today. But, you know what, I think we got it done. I think so. Everybody, you know, cooperated and we kept talking to everybody. Pretty good.
Yeah, because there's a lot of numbers that were a lot lower in projected revenue, and I just...
Well, the one, if you look at that page three, we changed the first line with the excise tax. We did just, we went down to 562 with that. We did that right off, because, you know, I talked to Deb Wagner, at Department of Revenue. She said, you know, "If you look at your three years before that, you really didn't go much over the 572." So with the cars, we just don't know. She was comfortable with me changing it to that. She was okay with it, okay. So then we went down and we looked at, oh, solid waste fees. Nancy was worried that was a little high for the estimated receipts, because the bills aren't going out till January, and the way they're gonna be... So we did change that to $61,000, okay? And John, I went back and forth with him with emails, phone calls. He came up, and he was pretty comfortable with 61. We might get a little more, but we might not, okay. But the good news is, when you go down to 17...
Yeah, that's the one he had a question.
...licensing permits, you gave me 54.8, and you went up on that.
Yeah, because before it was 105, so that's why I was wondering.
Right, and Nancy said you already collected 65. See, we, she knows the collection, so we went up to 80 with that. That put us up.
Okay.
And then fines and forfeits, I believe we went down on, because she said the library doesn't collect anything. You know, the fines are just not out there too much, and then, oh, and then the last line, 23, non-reoccurring, that's where I put the $14,000. And I went, yes, we got over a million there. So that helped a lot. It helped a lot. I mean, not tremendous, but, you know, $30,000 is $30,000 at this point.
Yeah, but our biggest issue is the choice-out money and the charter school money. That just went from...
You can't predict that. You can't until the fall, and so they...
But they knew in October.
I believe the deadline is that, so that's maybe something we need to at least come back to them and say, "Okay, what do you got?" You know, at that point. But we also didn't get a whole lot extra on our cherry sheet. I mean...
Yeah, no, the cherry sheets were bad. It was level funded, ultimately.
Yeah, if you look at, in fact, there's one that came out yesterday. It goes four or five, those are the pages I gave it. One that came out yesterday, so when I talked to Deb Wagner, originally Mr. Guzman said, "No, you can't use that figure." And I went, I mean, it was 15, $20,000 off, and I, so I left her a message, and she called me back about 12:30, and she said, "Nope, use the new one," and it was higher. It was okay. It wasn't a lot, but it's something.
Yeah, every little bit.
A little bit here, a little bit there, we just kept picking at it.
Yeah.
And we did get it down to $30,000, so, you know what, not bad.
Yeah, because most everything else in the budget is salary.
Right.
And you can't, we can't take the salary line item, so...
Right, and you've got a lot, a lot of, you know, places where you just can't take it, because it's fixed.
Right, so...
So, okay, that's what we can do.
Very good.
Magic number is 420, kind of?
I think so. And, you know, 415 is a number that's needed on the recap, and that's the calculations in the front. But I think we need to just go a few bucks over, just to be careful. They have looked at it, but, and, you know, we always try to do a little bit extra, just in case something goes awry. But we'll go, I'll go over with Ashley again and make sure that we've got everything in there.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, well, you're welcome. It was worth it. Every bit of it, and it was today.
Alright. So do we have anything else that we need to do?
No, just Tara wanted to read the election stuff. It's in there, but here.
Thank you.
Election stuff?
Just an update about the 2021 annual town election, so people have time to get feedbacks.
Already?
It's getting on top of things.
I guess so, yeah. What is it? Yeah, it's December.
I already got a paper saying, asking me if I want to run.
Oh, wow.
Like last week or two weeks.
Okay, so from the Office of the Town Clerk, I think this is posted on our webpage too, right? I think it went out?
I think so.
Maybe it went on the Facebook page that we have.
Yeah, I think that.
So, the election for town offices is May 3rd. That's the first Monday in May by the bylaw. So, May 3rd, 2021 will be the annual election. The annual town meeting is tentatively set for May 7th. Hopefully, we're beyond this COVID mess by then. We can have it on May 7th. Last day to submit nomination papers is Friday, March 19th, by 5:00 PM. Last day to withdraw is Sunday, April 4th, at 5:00 PM. And the last day to register to vote for the annual town elections and the annual town meeting will be Tuesday, April 13th, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The polling place is set for the North Brookfield Senior Center, and the polling hours will be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The offices that are currently up for elected office are: Three years on the Board of Selectmen currently. John Tripp is the incumbent, and he intends to run again. He's got unfinished business. He's gonna run again.
I didn't run the first time.
Well, this is true.
Full seat.
School committee for three years, Ruth Hontham. School committee for three years, Elizabeth Millad. Water commissioner for three years, Tim Nason, and he's already taken out his papers, it shows. Assessor for three years, Lisa Kularski, and she's not in expecting to run again for reelection, so that will be an open seat. Board of Health for three years, John Alvin. Cemetery commissioner for three years, Mary Beth Kularski. Library trustees, two spots, three years each, Haber Frazier Hodder and Ellen Smith, and Ellen has taken out papers for that spot. Five-year seat on the planning board, currently occupied by Susan Lyons. Playground committee for three years, Michael Doe. Housing authority for five years, Darlene Lavine. And South Worcester County Regional Volk School, three years, James Caldwell, and he has already taken out his papers. So those are the seats. If you're interested in running for any of those spots, you need to see the Town Clerk. Let's see. So I had a conversation with Trevor today on the COVID issue in town, and I also received in the board, in the selectman's mail, some emails, so... Let's see. So the first one we received was December 4th, Mary Kraus, and I believe this was posted on the Facebook, which created a lot of conversation. She writes, "To the Board of Selectmen, I have recently learned of your childish and selfish disregard for the health and well-being of the citizens you represent and the people who elected you by flouting commonsense behaviors regarding COVID-19. Be aware that you are elected to these offices and you can easily be thrown out by the will of the people. This issue is being made public and promoted on social media. We want our town employees, and make no mistake, that is what you are, to work for our best interests and to put aside self-serving partisan opinions for the well-being and safety of the people who have hired you. It's one thing to decide for yourself to be reckless with people's lives, but you as selectmen do not have that luxury. Trust that this will not be forgotten and will surely be an issue when your term of employment comes up for review in the next election." Let's see. David Brown says, "Do your job. Do as the White House Task Force, CDC, Governor, President-elect, and the actual health professionals are saying, wear your mask, especially at indoor meetings, and make damn sure you are promoting the use of PPE within the town. Pandemic is nothing to be taken lightly." Maurice Bracken, "Please know that I have not been shopping at Haniford Supermarket in North Brookfield because of the Board of Selectmen's policy on mask-wearing. I will continue to do business outside of North Brookfield until the policy changes. Banking, shopping, car repair, takeout, food, all being done away from North Brookfield." Not sure what the BOS policy on mask-wearing is. I don't think we've ever articulated a policy of our own on mask-wearing, so I'm not sure where you're getting that. And I find it not in the best interest of the town to punish an establishment in town for what you perceive as the Board of Selectmen's policy, without any information to actually know what the policy is. So, there are a number of fallacy statements, which are logical, illogical reasonings, and this one is, is one of those. I don't see what the point in not going into Haniford Supermarket because of what you perceive the policy of the Board of Selectmen are. I, I will say, there are two current COVID orders in effect. Order number 54 and order number 55. And this board has complied with the orders of the governor, to the letter, actually. So if you read the, the order as written, not as you wish it said, order number 54 governs time limitations of meetings, face coverings, contact tracing. That order is still in effect. And number seven on page five of that order says, "This order shall not apply." So the entire order does not apply to any municipal legislative body, which is town meeting. So, the masking requirement, the time limitations, the indoor venue cap numbers, all that does not apply to town meeting. So, we've been complying with the orders according to the order as written. Order number 55 is also in effect, and on page three, it exempts from the order and says, "The face covering requirement shall not apply where a person is unable to wear a mask due to a medical or disabling condition, and the person shall not be required to produce documentation verifying that condition." The second one is, "Where a face covering would impede communication by or with a person who has a hearing impairment or other disability." So, we've complied with that order. That's why we don't wear them here. I'll note for you that we have had four, I think it's four, annual and special town meetings since the start of this. And not one single positive COVID test has been linked to any one of those town meetings. Additionally, we've had 30, 34 maybe, selectmen's meetings in that time, and not one single positive COVID test has been linked to a selectman's meeting. Most of the time, we're under the 10 cap that, that's required. I'll note for you today that we had a maximum of five people in this room. We now have four. So, we are complying with all the orders, and to say otherwise is just disingenuous and factually inaccurate. The next one is from Marty Goulet. "It has come to our attention that your board has purposely rejected the recommendations of state and local health officials in regard to safe COVID-19 measures. The irresponsible action has consequences. My wife and I are joining the growing number of people who will choose to boycott all North Brookfield businesses. We will no longer shop at Haniford, Minimart, wash our cars, buy food from your establishments. Your actions are based on ignorant opinions instead of facts." That is an ignorant opinion, actually, instead of a fact. So, our, the fact remains that at this point in time, although positive tests are going up precipitously, you know, it's contagious, the death rate has been stagnated at about 30-ish for a seven-day running total since July. So, as Mr. Fitzpucci has stated in two emails back-to-back, "Selectman Dale Kylie, Jason Petritas, and John Tripp, you know damn well by now that COVID cases in North Brookfield have spiked." That is true, and that has been predicted since, I guess, the beginning, when they said we would get a spike in fall, and they were gonna get a second surge. And they said we were gonna get a surge around Thanksgiving, so I, I can't see how that wasn't predicted. "Your constituents are about to start dying." And I don't know what that is based on, certainly not based on the facts on the ground right now. "When people begin asking who is responsible, you know very well that your fallow attempts to scapegoat and gaslight the Board of Health will fail. The people of North Brookfield will hold your feet to the fire. Many townspeople are notifying local businesses that they will be shopping elsewhere due to the Board of Selectmen's deliberate choices to compromise town safety and hide behind the jargon of a four-month-old doctrine." I'm not sure what doctrine he's referring to. I mean, if it's the governor's orders, the governor's orders are in place until they're rescinded or superseded by another order, so I don't know if we need to change our position. "We are boycotting grocery stores, small businesses, because COVID-19 cases have spiked under your negligence. You are the problem that is causing this, and until this manner is resolved, we will continue to escalate and identify you, the three of us, as the utmost administrative managers solely responsible. We see how you disavow the safety of the people who elected you. We see your pitiful attempts to justify your childishness with a loophole from a document that is once again four months old and is as stale as four-month-old milk. We see how you exploit this policy to hide your responsibilities, and particularly me. We see your pathetic stunts in particular." That's short on descriptiveness. I'd like to know what my stunts are. Maybe you can clarify that for me. "Local businesses will be aware of why their numbers are decreasing, and they will know you are responsible. Man the hell up and take accountability for your actions while you still can." Well, we don't control any of the businesses. We don't set policy for the businesses. That's set by the governor. People are going into a store without a mask on. I assume they have a medical exemption. So I don't know why you would punish a business, because you think that the Board of Selectmen not wearing a mask in a closed environment that has led to no increase in cases is problematic. And you lack context for any of the cases. So we currently have 20 active cases right now. The spike has come after Thanksgiving, as predicted, because people are gathering houses. The governor has said that the highest incidence of transmissions are within the same household by multiple family members, and that's what we're seeing here, according to the Board of Health numbers. So out of the 20 active, nine will come off tomorrow. Nine is the biggest spike that we have seen, and the biggest single-day report is nine. Those will come off. We've had five new cases reported within the last, since Sunday. The reporting is Sunday to Saturday. So five new cases will replace the nine coming off. So, I just don't agree that the spike in cases is going to lead to the death of our citizens, but... And Ed Fitzpucci followed that one up with the next one. "There is about to be blood on the hands of Selectman Dale Kylie, John, John Petritas, and John Tripp. If you continue to act like spoiled and reactionary brats and refuse to acknowledge the graviness of the pandemic, your constituents will begin dying. You know damn well that North Brookfield's cases have spiked. I want you to know that the people of North Brookfield know who they will blame. They will blame you. They will blame you, Jason, Dale, John. We will relieve you of the seats of power you make a tyrannical mockery of, and we will identify you as responsible when the bodies start piling up. As you also know, I'm not the only one with a bone to pick with you. When mortalities begin in our town, we will make it abundantly clear of your efforts to throw the Board of Health under the rug, of your efforts to divert any and all attention from yourselves, from your efforts to sow a fraudulent patriotism into the reason you're okay with letting your townspeople die. When the time comes, we will hold your feet to the fire and hold you accountable to the harm you have caused. Your decisions are a pathetic embarrassment to the sanctity of our town." And then the ad hominem attack on me personally. "Dale, you are especially pitiful. You have made a statewide laughingstock of our town with your selfish..." made a statewide laughingstock of our town with your selfishness in July, and you haven't learned a damn thing. Stop living like you've just turned nineteen for the forty-second year in a row. Man up and prevent whatever harm you still can." Nineteen. But I don't commute on a skateboard. I'll just throw that out there. And, now the last one's a plowing one, so I don't think I need to, I don't think I need to read that. So I know some people are overly paralyzed with fear, but we are acting entirely within the exemptions cited by the governor. I've talked to town council about it. I don't know if there's any more to be said on that.
Do you care if I?
If you want to make your statement? No, go right ahead.
This is a statement I'm going to make, and it's me personally. I, John Tripp, cannot wear a mask or face covering for an extended period of time. I don't have to explain why. I don't do this for any reason other than my own personal reasons. We don't want any of you to die. I am very careful where I go, who I see, where I work. Some people can wear masks and some people can't. I can't. I wash my hands all the time. I have sanitizer in all my vehicles. When I go to the store, I put on a mask for the short time I am there. I respect your health issues also. I know the guidelines and suggested regulations. I don't need anyone, anyone lecturing me for any reason. If you don't feel comfortable coming near me, please don't. Thank you for listening. John Tripp.
Alright, I think that's all that needs to be said on that tonight. Anything from the, the history?
Well, apparently, you know, COVID's being spread through YouTube, so I don't know. You gotta be careful.
Uh, yeah. So...
As far as us being responsible for people in town dying, I'm sorry. If you want to wear a mask and you, you take a chance and go somewhere where you know people are sick or whatever, that's on you. We're not babysitting you. We can't babysit you. We're three guys up here. The boards are all trying to get along. Do your best at staying safe, but it's not on us if somebody gets sick or dies. We're all grown-ups here.
Yep. So, most of the positive cases that they've been seeing are within the same homes, and they're being spread within a home. So multi-generational families, four in a particular house, five in a particular house. They come one or two here or there, and they're not really connected to any meetings, any municipal buildings. So to blame us is misplaced, I believe. Alright, anything else? No? Good. Motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.